All right, good evening. I'm Tim Skoggins, chairman of the Shasberry Select Board, and I'm calling this meeting of the Shasberry Select Board to order on Monday, December 17th, 2018, at 6:30. First, I need to check with the board. Does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
Approval of minutes? Did you just need me to sign November 19th? Because we approved it last time.
Yes, then you can just sign it.
Okay. So we have minutes from December 3rd that were circulated. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Art?
Second.
Second by Joe. Any additions, corrections, discussion on the minutes for December 3rd? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the minutes for December 3rd are approved by a vote of 4-0-0. And these are the ones for November 19th that I need to sign. That were approved last time. Next up, warrants. I have check warrant number seven in the amount of $78,737.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Art?
Second.
Second by Joe. And...
That is the community appropriations warrant for last year. With one addition, the payment to the bank and regional commission was added into that. It's not part of community appropriations, but we're paying it with that one.
Very good.
So we wait till the end of...
Yeah, when we wait till we collect enough tax dollars, so it's always in December we pay our community appropriations.
Yep, okay. So we are taking that out of previous tax ones.
Yeah, and we're not borrowing the money until...
Yep.
Yeah, good. Any other discussion? And I just moved the paperclip, and that is check warrant number 17, not number 7. Any other discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
So check warrant number 17 in the amount of $78,737 is approved, 4-0-0. And I have check warrant number 16 in the amount of $67,034.47.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Art?
Second.
Second by Joe. Major items on this one are $3,200 to American Rock Salt, $2,200 to Bennington County Sheriff, $1,300 to G.A. Bow Fuels, $1,100 to Morris Repair, $2,600 to Morris Repair. Anything specific there, Dave?
Just bringing some of the trucks back up to par. Having a little trouble with the Dodge again. We keep, seem to need to replace parts on that thing. Of course, it's off warranty now, so...
What is that up for replacement?
We haven't even paid it off yet.
What's the $3,200 for?
I thought that was paid off.
The last one is next year.
$2,200 for the sheriff.
It's the last payment, that and the Volvo together.
$3,200 was American Rock Salt.
American Rock Salt. Oh, okay. That's before the sheriff.
$7,300 to TAM, $1,900 to Versatile Office Trailers, so that Dave can live indoors for a few months.
I can live in my trailer. And Melanie, don't forget Melanie.
$27,000 to VLCT Property and Casualty.
That's half of the 2019 insurance premium.
Mm-hmm. $2,400 to wholesale distributors.
It's all a bunch of little parts.
Blades and stuff?
Yeah, yeah. Parts, chains, everything.
Gotcha.
And $1,100 to Williamy Daily. And those are the items over $1,000. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving check warrant number 16, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So check warrant number 16 in the amount of $67,034.47 is approved, 4-0-0. Are there any announcements?
We're here.
We're here, oh yeah. For the next couple of months, the Select Board and other board meetings for Shasberry Planning Commission and Development Review Board will be here at the Shasberry Elementary Library as we are doing constructions on the interior of Coal Hall to create office space on the second floor. Also, I would remind people that now is the time to think about serving your town in appointed offices for the Planning Commission and the Development Review Board. Both boards have openings and are looking to fill them, so if you would like to be considered for that office, send a letter of intent, which is just, can be just an email to the town administrator and let him know that you would like to serve. Are there any public comments? Okay, that takes us to item 7, which is the treasurer's report. Melanie Dexter. Has to carry her own chair to the table. That's just not even gentlemanly. I apologize for that.
That's okay. Let's see, there's very little going on right now. It's kind of the doldrums. Water was due last week, so that was what last week was about, and then, of course, we were kicked out on Wednesday, and I think the move went pretty smoothly. We're all installed in the, Dave and I are installed in the trailer, as we said. He assures me that the polyurethane smell is going to dissipate.
So, three months, three months.
I'll believe it when I see it.
The day after you move out.
Yeah, that's right.
Exactly. Yeah, there's really very little going on, other than, you know, you can see, if you want to scroll back up, that you see there's a great big delinquent tax, couple of checks came in. Those are the people who were caught by surprise by, you know, one thing or another. They, so they immediately turned right around and paid MRT, so that's why that's so large. There might be another, one more big one coming. Okay, look down. Those are, you see the checks written in December so far. You've already signed those warrants, so that shouldn't be a surprise, but that's a lot of garage money is what's going on there.
Garage money and community appropriations, we just...
Um, that would not be included until it's an actually created check.
Okay, so that's not part of the...
So that'll be, as of tomorrow, it'll be included. You want to scroll down a little bit more? There haven't been any payrolls yet this month, but you just, I guess I'm dealing with one tomorrow. So the reserve fund has kind of a lot of money in it right now because that owes quite a bit to the general fund. A lot of, again, a lot of garage money needs to be returned to the general fund, so that's why that's so high. The garage bond you see is down to about half a million, and that's going to continue to get spent down, I guess, pretty quickly at this point, right?
Is the garage reserve, has it been spent, or is it still there?
We're not supposed to spend that until we've spent the bond money. That's, that's the agreement with that, you know, not to...
Okay, so there's still $800,000 or so to spend on the garage?
Yep. If you want to look at the reserve spreadsheet, you'll see there's really not much new going on there. You're just going to see a lot of water. If you look down at 260, you can see all the activity is in water. The debit there was, somebody sneaked a tax payment in with the water payment. They do whatever, they trick me every time. They send it in a batch of water payments, and they don't say that it's a tax bill, a tax check on the check anywhere, so it gets in the water payments and then has to go back again, so that's what that is. But that's all that's going on in the, all the reserve funds so far for this month.
Okay. And I would just draw the board's attention to the Economic Development Fund, Study Fund up here. We had talked about the broadband survey of the town, and if we do a mail-out survey, that might require a little bit of money to do that, and I was suggesting that we build that into the FY '20 budget. Dave pointed out, we have money to do economic development in this fund that's just been sitting there for a long time, so I would recommend, as David did, that we, we take it from there rather than adding it to the budget.
And if you wanted to look at the 280 line there, the second of the two, that's the cash that's still sitting there, and that's not, it looks like more than it is because some of that's owed to the general fund. So when I clear out those due-to, due-froms, that will be where at the proper level for cash. The cash will match up with the balance sheet, but that's the money we're just talking about there.
Melanie, when is this year going to be credited?
Hmm, sorry?
When is this year going to be credited to these? This year it transfers into the reserves?
Um, when, I guess I usually do them late in December, right around now. I could do it soon.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, it's one of these things, we want to wait, make sure we've got all of our tax money before we do it, so, but yeah, there's, there's some, I need to do the transfer to the schools, and I, so there's a bunch of...
Oh, the school is still there, okay, yeah.
And end-of-year things that have to happen.
Okay.
I might actually try, well, now people are not going to want to be visiting me in the trailer, so I think it'll be quiet. I can do some of this stuff.
You have the grand suite in the trailer.
Yeah, so I'll probably, I was thinking, I usually do it the week between Christmas and New Year because it's very, very quiet.
Oh, okay, right, yeah.
Any other questions yet?
Just by using that line to 10, we can do that this year, whereas if we put it in the budget for 20, we wouldn't be able to use it until...
Yeah, it's just a motion from the board to dedicate the funds to that program.
If we put it in, if it went in the budget, we wouldn't be able to spend it until...
It doesn't need to be voted, it's already been put aside for...
Right, yeah, I mean, if we would, anytime we choose to spend more than, you know, a few thousand, we, we make a motion just to put it in the record, so that, I think that's all that sounds like is required.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the Planning Commission has agreed to take on that task, so...
Good. So they'll, they'll put some thought into the questionnaire that goes out and that sort of stuff?
Well, the Southern Zone has created a questionnaire that they're recommending that we use.
All right.
And I think it's good, but we can certainly, you know, change it if we want to, but there's value in keeping the same questionnaire so that we collect regional data.
That's right. Sometimes the question that you ask, yep.
I just want to point out that that is just cash. I'm not, I think the balance sheet probably matches up with that pretty closely, but you shouldn't count on that number. That's just a cash number. I mean, that's actual money in the bank. But if it owes, if that fund owes another fund money or something, that would not actually be available to you. So I could certainly provide you with the balance sheet for that fund.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's touched that fund in decades.
Yeah, I think it's probably really close to cash, if not identical, but, but I just would want to lead you to believe there, that that's necessarily all available.
Well, we're talking low thousands, you know, like 1,500 for postage kind of numbers, yeah.
Melanie, the, once, the check, or the checks that just came in from people that got caught short on, that leaves probably the usual, or the ones that are really delinquent.
Yeah.
Is that number up or down, do you know?
It's, it looks, it's really remarkably consistent from year to year. It's got a little bit of a margin of error around it, so it bounces around like that.
Oh, sure, but still.
I can, I look at it every year when, when I really have a sense of it, and I'll...
Yeah, because after, you said there might be a couple more.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I did, the last few years I've actually put together a spreadsheet saying the number of people and the, and the amount in dollars, and, and I'll do that, I'll update that.
Just curious.
Yeah. It's, you know, I keep, I want it to go down, I, you know, I really want, I really want it to go down, but it, there's, it just doesn't. It's, it's pretty consistent.
Why pay 8% more?
Yeah. I don't know.
Good.
Very good.
Roads report. I understand our road crew is in bed early tonight because they woke up early this morning.
Yeah, Mike started at 2:00 this morning, so he's taking the evening off. There isn't a lot to report. They have been doing a lot of brushing on Cold Creek, White Creek Road.
White Creek Road, yeah.
Yeah. And we've had greater heights out again on East Road, taking down some things there. Basically, that's what it's going to be for the winter is brushing, taking care of some of these trees, including the one on the corner here that is really hanging down into the road. We found some pines that need to be trimmed up because they're actually growing like into the road, so we're going to be doing a bunch of that during the winter and keeping the plows going and just getting ready for a storm, but it's going to be kind of nice this, the rest of this week, I understand, so... But it's a lot of just basic maintenance around town, keeping up and keeping the crew going through the winter. We can do a lot of the tree work during the winter. That's about the extent of the report for tonight, short but to the point.
We have our new sidewalk machine?
Yes.
And it's working, I haven't...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I haven't driven by when it's been out.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, it works great. Yeah, runs right along. Roy Ware came back to run it, got a new machine, so he came back.
Who can blame him?
It's all a tech.
Yeah. Oh, Roy does a great job, shows up, you don't even have to call him, he just shows up and goes to work, so...
I think he just wanted something that worked.
Yeah, yeah, well, he did leave the other one a few times.
Kind of left him stranded, though, you know?
That one, yeah, the machine really left him, not, not...
Surprised he wanted to toil before.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, after Rhodes' report, we're up to our FY 2020 budget. Dave, you want to walk us through any changes you made since we last talked?
Kind of version five of this. The one big change was adding the $3,500 into the Planning Commission budget to cover the town plan because, as you know, we didn't get the grant from the state this year.
Oh, okay.
So that's a project that needs to be done, it's a project that's kind of beyond the scope of doing in-house. We need, we need the work from BRCRC, so we'll just do it that way. It makes a very minor increase overall. The budget now looks like it's going to go up 3.1%, but it's still about $50,000 less than the fiscal '15 budget, so we're not really, in five years, we really haven't gotten anywhere, we're still less than we spent that year, so...
Well, this is the first year in three or four years, I think, four years that we've had any kind of increases.
Yeah, that we've actually gone up at all, yeah, yeah.
We've really held a hard line for quite a while.
So, and then we still haven't gone over the '15 budget, so we've saved a lot in inflation and just normal cost of living increases haven't been there.
I don't think people realize that we've actually got money set aside for every piece of new equipment, too.
Yeah.
It's just amazing what Dave's been able to do.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I've said it before, I'll say it again, Dave saves us $1,000 every day somewhere in the budget. He's always, always digging for something.
I think we're in good shape again for this year. Don't know if there's any big changes up here. I will have a spreadsheet restructuring, the employee salaries in the garage, including our new employee, Ed Legacy, who's on board. He'll be our new full-time employee.
Does that need a vote of the board?
Yes, it does, yes.
Okay, all right.
Actually, we could have that vote tonight, that would be helpful. And then I'll send a spreadsheet about that around. We're going to change a few pay levels, and that doesn't change the budget either because we've been able to restructure that so that we have more money available for that.
So he's starting out, he wants to start out at, what, 2050 was it?
Uh...
With the dollar raised by July?
Yeah, executive session for personnel discussions.
We're going to get into discussing somebody's employment contract, we should go into executive session.
Which we can do if you want, afterward, we can do a quick one. Yeah, actually, unless someone has questions, other than the $3,500, this hasn't changed since the last time. I just don't know if there's any pressing, pressing issues other than discussing a few personnel issues.
Art, I believe you had an item you wanted to discuss.
Yeah, I want to talk about the payment to the rescue squad.
Do you know where that is on here?
That is Go to Public Safety, which is down probably two pages. And just scroll down, it'll be right there. Go up, I'm sorry, it said Total Public Safety, but it's right there.
Bennington Rescue.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Just to remind the public, this used to be a $2,000 community appropriation.
Yeah.
Bennington Rescue came to us and said they'd been running on an endowment for quite a while, they couldn't sustain it for much longer on that, and have asked towns to increase their contribution significantly. Two, three years ago, Forrest came to us and asked for $42,000, which we were not able to do in one fell swoop. We raised it to 75, two years ago, 7,500, $15,000 last year, and Dave and I have suggested as a number this year of 25,000, which is still less than the 42,000 that Forrest asked
I could either make a motion and table it, or just make sure we talk about it when Tony is here.
Yeah, I, when you told me that you wanted to talk about this, I called Tony, who is sick, and he said, yeah, he would like to be here when we discuss that, and he would like Forrest to be here when we discuss that. So we have one or two more meetings before we have to nail this down, right?
Uh, yeah, and it may be even beneficial for the first time in five years, just to schedule a budget meeting, just to go through this thing and do it in one fell swoop.
Oh, like a separate Monday?
Yeah, yeah, just where we could find an acceptable day for everybody and...
Yeah, well, we're going to need, since we didn't do payroll tonight, we're going to need, are we going to need a payroll?
No, payroll always gets done after it's paid, because it has to be processed, and then you get it. Let me look into it, we could find a date, I mean, maybe in that way we could go through the budget and do it in one fell swoop, because I think, like I said, it's 98% done, except for just a few tweaks, and this being really the biggest one, because, yeah, the 25 is just the number that came up, but needs to be discussed on it.
There's no need to discuss it tonight, I mean, we'll...
Yeah, just so the board can be thinking about it, there's kind, there are two schools of thought here in the extremes, and Forrest at $42,000 is looking at an industry average number of like $12 or $13 per resident, whereas where he comes up with that number. Dave pointed out last year that at 15,000, we are essentially on parity with Bennington based on the number of calls that actually come here. And he's also pointed out that we're also covered by Arlington Rescue on the north end, so I think there's, there's room for argument here on the right level.
My concern is, if, if the number of calls that were done in Shasberry went up by that percentage, that we're saying we're going to go up, that's fine, but if, if we're just keeping and paying more and still only having the same number of calls, which I think are reasonable compared to what happens in Bennington, I mean, I think we're a lot, we're a lot less...
A lot less busy.
Nitty, is that the word?
Yeah. And, and Arlington is covering with comparable service to the north end.
And they don't ask for a raise every year?
No, they did this year.
Oh, they did.
$500, from $7,000 to 7,500, but they were just certified as a paramedic ambulance service also, so it's the same status as Bennington.
These are all things to think about, okay?
So the ALS?
Mm-hmm.
As long as we talk about it later, I'm fine.
Yeah, good. All right, well, let's make a note to get Forrest in here, Forrest and Tony. Just in all the town can afford that much.
No, it's, it...
I know what you're saying.
And I, and I think that, that number per person was derived from the fact that they were going behind on their endowment, and he took the, he took that number and divided it by total number of citizens in Bennington and Shasberry. I don't think that was a number that was indicative of service needed in any town. That, he came up with that number by taking what they lost in the endowment, or what they lost from the original endowment to what they have now, and just divided it by the number of citizens. So that really is not a service number, that's a, that's a get-me-caught-up number, which I don't think we should be responsible for.
That's right.
There is the big issue of transports, which isn't really his fault either, because they keep getting, people keep needing to be transferred from this hospital to one of the major medical centers, and it's odd in this area, there isn't a private company that provides those services, so they get, someone needs to go, and they have to go.
Don't they get paid for the transfer, Dave?
Yeah, but there's, there's billing issues which Forrest can speak to better. They do get paid, but it depends on what level of care, it's transported and distance. It has its issues, that's why a lot of it's privately done elsewhere.
One thing I learned about it, May, May 31st was, what, Labor Day or Memorial Day? Anyway, the parade I was supposed to be in, and I was in Albany Med and State. Well, there you go, I went for an ambulance ride for the first time in my life, and the bill was astronomical.
Yeah.
Luckily, the, it was medically, deemed medically necessary for me to go, and the insurance did pay for it. Talking to Cambridge Valley, who brought me there, and I said, look, you know, trying to talk to them about, you know, how, how are we going to pay you? And, because I didn't think the insurance company was going to do it, and they did, luckily. And he said typically, most people don't pay, he said the insurance company will give the people a check, they'll go on vacation or go, you know, on a Christmas binge, you know, who knows? But he said typically, people, he said, a lot of times they won't pay. They'll get the check from the insurance, and he said, and they can't go after them, legally they can't.
Oh, yeah.
According to him.
Yeah, no, I don't, I have no idea.
Yeah, and I said, well, don't worry about it, I said, well, we get the check from the insurance, you'll get it.
When I was in this years ago, we used to, we used to bill, and if people didn't pay, we just would forget about it.
Yeah.
But, you know, the expense levels now, you can't run like that, and, and there is the fact of the distance from here to anywhere, if it has to be ground transport, but, I don't know, there has to be a better solution to this. I mean, somebody has to be paying up somewhere here.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Dave, anything else you want to tell us about?
No, like I said, the only thing that changed in here was putting the $3,500 in, which just raised it a teeny fraction. Everything else that's changed with payroll and things is absorbed in the figures that are already here, so...
What did you do with the gravel budget, Dave?
The gravel budget actually decreased because we've only gone up to 12% of the gravel budget, as we've changed focus into preserving what we have, and it's going to change a great deal next year as we concentrate with Michael's plan of the ditching and just getting the roads formed better.
It's still, still a critical item, I don't think we should...
Oh, no, it still has $50,000 here, and, you know, push comes to shove, there's $45,000 more in the Class 3 road fund.
Okay.
So, I mean, you know, if we have a big gravel problem, then, I mean, you know, $50,000 budget could be wiped out in mud season.
Yes, I agree.
You know, so, you know, we would have the mess, but the idea is that we're not going to go out and make giant areas of repair.
Until, until we got the ditches and trees.
Until we've done the ditches and cut the trees back and, and open the roads up and taken a, taken a look at it.
If you don't do that, you waste your time anyway.
Yeah, so I think that's the plan, I endorse it, and it'll get us around, and then we can be putting less gravel down, that'll stay in place.
Did we pretty well get all the areas that were turned to mud last year taken care of?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, so we may not have.
So that's what I'm saying, yeah. Once you get that fix right, it's not coming back.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, it all depends, every winter is different, we'll see what this one brings.
I've seen years where there wasn't ever even a mud season, it just, it just went perfectly.
Yeah, I mean, we had that awful year a couple of years ago, and then they, when I had the big mountain of gravel in the back, nothing happened. I had it for the next winter, so, you know, it's pretty unpredictable.
It doesn't boil.
No, it just, just sits.
Seems like it's been pretty wet for the past couple of months.
Oh, it's been terrible.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But, you know, if you believe in such things, you know, it's like the farmer's almanac is not saying it's not going to be much of anything this year. So, and El Nino or El Nino, whatever it is, is supposed to be favorable, well, not my opinion, but favorable to hear of to not have a lot of snow, which, you know, has its negative effects for us, too, because people don't come and spend money, which is...
Okay, okay.
Yep. And Michael and I, when we look at it, we'll manipulate inside these categories as we look, develop further what we want to do, especially in renting equipment and changing equipment, even the planned purchase for next year is, you know, we're kind of looking at that, what's the best thing, what should be put on auction or traded in, things like that.
Yep, okay.
Lot of changes.
Is there a big piece that's scheduled to be replaced next year?
Uh, normally, we would be replacing one of the single axles, about a hundred, and let's say, based on Sunderland's last one, about a hundred and sixty thousand, which we have the cash for. It's just a question of, is this what we're doing? So, I'll, I'll leave that for Michael to evaluate what needs to be done. Maybe we do, maybe we don't. But if we need it, we have the money for it. If he thinks we should try something else, then, or look to trade some of these other things in and, uh, you know, right size or change the size of the fleet, we'll, we'll see what we do. We have the flex to move forward with it, that's the big thing.
All right, uh, we put out bids, a request for proposal for cemetery mowing, which we do every two years.
Every three. We, the bid is for two years with an option for the third year. And I've just stayed with that format. I don't know where that came from, but it works, so...
Yep, it works. And so, I believe we got one bid for mowing, and I will open that now.
Oh, I should mention that for the budget too, I was doing the community appropriations today. We, the big change will be BTN, that, that radio station down the hill here, asked for five thousand dollars this year, which they had asked for a couple of thousand a couple of years ago and were turned down. So, I'm gonna call them and schedule with them to come in and speak to the board.
It was turned down by the public?
No, it was turned down by the board, as I remember.
By the board?
Yeah. Do you remember, Tim, was it the board? I don't think it went to a vote. They might have even withdrawn it. I have to get the notes out.
I don't remember the thing.
I wanna say it was either late, or, or they withdrew it, or something. I don't think we, I don't recall lowering it intentionally.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask them to come in, 'cause it's, five thousand is a fairly large request, so, uh, especially for the first time or the second time, so...
'Cause usually, we've given them about five hundred.
No, we haven't gotten anything.
Well, we have in the past. It's been a few years.
Yeah, it's been a few years, uh, and that's when they came back, and then they disappeared again for some reason. So, I figure I'll just invite them to the first January meeting, and talk to the board, and, um, take it from there.
Do you listen to that station?
No.
I don't know anybody that does.
I do.
That's why they break down.
Okay, what do you listen to on?
Well, on, on thirteen seventy AM, I listen to it, 'cause it's the only station I can get at work. So, it's kinda funny, because we call...
You're in a steel building.
Well, it's just I work in an electronics shop, so we got all kinds of, you know, radio interference. But, uh, yeah, we always call WBTN, well, better than nothing.
It's probably not the endorsement he's looking for.
Well, I used to be a DJ there.
Oh, did you? Really?
Yeah, for ninety-four-three WHGC and thirteen seventy WBTN, yeah. And I was up at Cat Country, and, yes, had my voice out there for a while, yeah.
You can talk shop with them, man.
Good time old East Station, thirteen seventy.
Okay, uh, this is the, uh, bid, this is the insurance statement, this is from, from Jay Coonrad, with Sycamore Landscaping. And, uh, the bid for one season is twenty-five thousand dollars. Two additional seasons, the bid is, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars. And the hour, hourly rate for work outside of the contract is sixty-five dollars per hour. What did, uh, Jay's been doing the cemetery mowing for us, um, what, do you remember what the contract?
Twenty-four.
Last year, the contract was twenty-four?
But I don't think last year's contract had Grandview in it.
Yeah, this does have Grandview in it.
This does, see, this, this isn't, you can't compare the two contracts, 'cause this one has Grandview in it.
Okay, but that's, uh, that seems like a modest increase for another big cemetery.
Yeah, and Grandview's has some...
Yeah, his insurance statements are also included in here. Uh, the equipment he owns is included. Uh, he's got professional references.
Yeah, he's good. He's been doing it for a long time. He does, yeah. He's got a good crew that he has with him as well.
Yep, I agree. Do I, uh...
Make a motion?
Here, we got a motion from Art to, uh, award the cemetery mowing contract to Sycamore Landscaping.
Second.
Seconded by Joe, and that's at twenty-five thousand dollars per year with the addition of the Grandview Cemetery. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. So, the cemetery mowing contract is awarded to Sycamore Landscaping. And, um, you reminded me, this is a two-year contract with an option for...
Two-year contract with an option for a third, yeah.
Okay, two-year contract with an option for a third. Very good.
So, did he take the option for the third?
I think...
Because didn't it say for two additional, two additional seasons?
Yeah, he's saying twenty-five thousand dollars for each season, yeah. But our, our RFP said two-year contract with...
An option, the options on both ends. He could offer the twenty-five now, but the option's on our end too, to say no.
For the third?
For the third, yeah.
So, this, this...
So, it's an option on both ends?
It's an option on both ends.
I just wanna understand, this is just for two years? We're, we're locked in for two years?
Yes. Yeah, and then if he's willing and we're willing, we can just give him the third. He's been doing it for like nine, probably, so... No, it's just as long as the board approved it.
Nobody has to sign it?
And you'll let Jay know?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, item eleven is town garage coal haul update.
Well, the garage is moving right along. Uh, the roadway to the transfer station has been fixed, so it doesn't flood out. It's not finished road yet. As I remember, we're putting the top coat on everything, which, uh, we may get to in the spring, depending on how the rest of it goes. The floor has been poured inside the garage. The, uh, apron, aprons are supposed to be poured this week, I believe. Uh, the heating went into the garage, and we're just, uh, on a pretty good pathway here. Uh, the one thing I, I had mentioned, I had talked to Tim about this morning, uh, looking at the mechanical room and down the road, I wanna create space, talk to our plumber and Russell. I already spoke to Russell about this, of, uh, expanding room in case we have to put any water filtration things in later down, like a poet. If we don't create space now, we're just putting a pipe in, so we have a little room, uh, it could cost a lot more later. It's just precautionary, just to think about, so that it can be done. Other than that, it, it's really, we're almost done with all the exterior things, so it's just gonna move inside the garage and, you know, get it finished up.
Just in time, nice.
Yeah, and that'll be, uh, that'll go fairly quickly. We're looking at, uh, February for it to be completed. Uh, the, the site work is, is finally clearing up, and, uh, I mean, you can tell the difference when you go there now. And of course, it won't be totally finished, and we won't be taking over fully from Russell until probably April, because some of the retention ponds, they still have to be seeded and, and, uh, everything else, and that can, obviously can't be done now. So, it'll be spring.
It keeps us on target, though, for February, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what we were talking about before.
February, and, you know, we wanted the building finished, uh, because during the kind of shoulder month of March, before we, we start getting mud season too bad, you know, the guy's gonna need time to go in and decide, this is where this tool rack's going, this is where this is going, set things up, so he can come into the building and be organized. It's not just gonna be a mad run from here to there.
So, so can we start parking trucks in sometime late February, March?
Uh, I, I would assume so.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, I would think most things are gonna stay here through the snow season.
Yeah, right.
And, uh, I would think the final actual closing of the garage we have now would probably be in May. Uh, because there's no rush. It's better to go at this thing and, like I said, get it organized correctly as we move in. And it'll be, it'll be set to go.
Is this all checked, done?
Yeah, it's huge.
I know, I, I went up, but I didn't go in.
Well, yeah, no, it, it's big, uh, but it was designed, uh, the object was that you can back a trailer in and tilt the whole trailer and dump it inside, and you can.
So, you don't have to keep pushing?
No, you don't have to push, you can just dump and... Well, you have to push some to push up the pile, but...
Get, get your pile high.
There's, uh, room in there for a lot of salt and a lot of sand, so we'll be in, in good shape with that.
You're still gonna leave a pile of sand out for people in the town that can...
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be a pile. I don't know if we're gonna keep that at Coal Hall, because we have to keep some salt at Coal Hall for the sidewalk machine. We'll have to have a little hut or something for the sidewalk machine, 'cause, uh, we're not gonna keep it up at the garage, clearly.
Long haul.
Yeah, long haul, long haul. We won't see Ray for days, you know? See the little yellow light going down the road. Uh, but, yeah, we have a few adjustments there. The transfer station still needs a few things, a shed or two. Um, it, it's all coming, but, uh, we're just trying to work through the bigger items at the moment. But it is, it is moving along. It's been, uh, it's been a fairly smooth project. There's been this few kickbacks with the road and things like that, but, you know, it's getting rectified now. Like I said, the inside will go pretty quick. We were going all through it all at, at, uh, the meeting last Thursday. There's no surprises out there. We're down to two propane tanks, which are interestingly becoming difficult to get.
How big?
Two thousand gallon tanks.
Two one thousands or?
Yeah, two one thousands, yeah.
They, they dug up a two thousand gallon tank in Green, out of Greenberg's.
Oh, did they, really? Wow, that's a big tank. Yeah, yeah, the original plan had up to three, but, uh, no one seems to think we need three. So, we'll save the, probably quite a bit of money and not, not get three.
Two smaller ones has more evaporations. The, the amount of surface area for evaporation is critical. And I think that, I think two smaller ones are better than one big one, I think, I heard.
I bet, yeah.
Yeah, they are buried.
Which is even better.
Yeah, yeah, they're buried tanks, uh, which is why we're gonna own them.
Yes, for sure, yeah.
Uh, so we moved the, the fuel tank a little bit. We bought a lot of bollards. I'm very concerned about people bumping our things, so we bought a lot of bollards.
Very well spent.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, and then, uh, when this, when we get done and the lights are on the building, and we see how, where the lights throw, uh, we did pre-install conduit under the new driveway and everything, over to the salt shed. And we left all the light packages off to salt shed, uh, because we were gonna illuminate it from the garage itself. But we'll see how that works out, and if we need to, just run a wire through there and put a pole up by the, by the salt shed and give it more light. Shelley stole her shed, although the office still stands to get her a new shed, so we'll, uh, we'll see if she wants one. And that's really it. I mean, it's going along, though. We talked about the money earlier. I, it is a tight slide to the end here, uh, no doubt, but, uh, there's really nothing major at this point that I could even see happening. I think we've gone by the big, potential for big, huge problems, and we didn't have any, you know? In fact, I think by the time we got done with the change orders, maybe we were a thousand dollars more than what we originally intended, 'cause we got credit for a few things we took out and...
Excellent, yeah.
So, you know, it's coming in tight. I think we always knew it was gonna be tight, but, uh, I don't see anything coming up. It's kinda, getting kinda late in the game. The whole building's up and the building inside is pretty basic, you know, so...
Air bones.
Yeah, well, it's nice, but it's, you know, it's two-by-four walls and a, you know, it's just building a room at the end of a huge open area, so, yeah. Yeah, so, it should, it should work out pretty nicely. I think it's, uh, it's good. We're lucky now with, uh, weather. It's a little warmer, which is good for the outside concrete that has to be done. They were gonna start defrosting the ground, I think, yesterday, but as it warms up, that's good, so, yeah. And Coal Hall started today. It's actually framed out already. So, you can see exactly where everything is. The meeting room is a very good size. Uh, actually, it can hold up to sixty people, uh, according to the fire marshal, so, uh, and the offices come out to a very nice size. Uh, Shelley's exactly bigger than, than I thought. And cemetery and, uh, uh, water have a bigger workspace than, than I envisioned. So, and it turns out, uh, turns out to be very nice. Uh, we do have a few add-ons to the original estimate that we've talked about before, and I, I'd mentioned to the board a couple of months ago that we'll probably have to use ten thousand or so out of the general fund we balance. Uh, that's a little bit over now. Uh, we have to bring it up to fire code. The building doesn't quite, needs new, newer, uh, equipment on the front doors. I will replace those doors at some point, but just to use it, the front door is a fire exit. And the way it's set up now is not the code, so we'll have to change those. Take a few other doors off, the railings on that porch thing in the back, they have to be changed, they have to be raised, and wheel, handrails have to be put on the staircase, things like that. And then, uh, added on the floor, uh, finishing the floor. 'Cause, uh, we left that off. I left that off, and that's clearly the time to do it is when we are doing this, before we move everything back in. The only spot that won't be done is the storage closet, because it turns out some of the files upstairs were impossible to find place, someplace to put them, unless we got another container. Containers cost five hundred and seventy bucks just to get here, so, we're not gonna stay on the floor. We'll just, when he's done, we're gonna put what we have left inside the storage cabinet, and we'll finish the floors, and then we'll move that stuff into the offices, and it'll be fine. It'll be dark in the closet anyway, no, no one will notice. Uh, and that should, that should be, uh, that should be done by the beginning of February, uh, no later than the first or second week of February. So, we might be in for a meeting before town meeting, but I think, uh, it'll shaping up quite nicely now. Very high ceilings, which is nice, so, should be, should be good.
It'll be nice.
Yeah, it will look different. I will guarantee you that. It'll look a lot different. You know, we, it'll be good. Nobody will be blinded sitting in the audience.
You got those leather recliners with the slack.
Yes, yes, yes.
We won't be looking up at the peeling, uh...
No.
plaster and laughing.
Nope, it'll be lights that work. It'll be almost like here with lights that work and, uh...
I wish I brought my sunglasses for this one. I'm not used to this stuff.
I'm not replacing the Staples table, though. I like my Staples tables.
You know, you got something that gets wood?
Yeah. A nice sturdy Staples plastic will last a long time.
Looks better than Dave's plastic.
Rubber made.
Yeah, okay, okay, very good. All right, any other business you need to bring to our attention?
Uh, no, unless we want to, uh, have a quick, uh, executive session and talk about a few personnel things, uh, that are budgetary related, but if we're gonna talk about, uh, some of this, it has to be in an executive session. 'Cause it isn't just payroll, which is public information, it's individual things.
Yeah, okay.
How many poet systems we got in, Dave?
Well, yeah, it's okay. We have one poet system in, uh, and a well in the fall testings. Yeah, fall testing, uh, came up exceeding the state minimums by about four parts per trillion.
And that, that's by combining all of them, too.
That's by combining all five elements now, 'cause it used to just be PFOA and PFOS. Now, there's three more, and interestingly, interestingly enough, it failed for one of the other three new ones, not PFOA or PFOS. So, um...
Do, do you know what the other three are, or just?
I, I'd have to get the book out and read them to you. It's, uh, you know...
Anything you've never heard of before, or?
No, I'd never heard of PFOA until it started, so, you know.
Well, how about some other numbers, Dave? Are they, are they weird, like the state numbers at PFOA?
I, I don't know how they match up with other things. Uh, I'll check on that and let you know. I, uh, kinda more focused on, uh, what we need to do, and what we need to do is install a poet system. I've already spoken to the homeowner. We're providing bottled water, which is a requirement of the state, and, uh, we'll install the poet system, which of course is a requirement of the state also. And we're, we're responsible for that system and the currently operating system, and, uh...
Has it got to the point where we should ask the state or a local representative of the state senators about getting help on this with the state, 'cause it's their regulations that are causing this?
We have been, uh, we've had many conversations with our representatives and with A and R. I think the, no one is inclined to change the law, because what, the law is now that whoever's responsible for the thing, and the thing is the landfill.
Yeah, well, I'm not, I don't mean that to them. I mean, it's, they're lower than federal regulations is causing it. And every other town that's had this problem has had a factory in town to pick it up. And I'm wondering if we should ask our representatives to maybe try to get the state to help us out.
Uh, we can certainly do that. My, my personal belief is that, uh, when we're talking about one or two poets, I think we should... I think we should deal with it ourselves. I think, uh, I believe that if we had a situation on the order of the Bennington or the North Bennington problem, that the state would help us, the way the state helped Bennington and North Bennington. Right now, our problem is minuscule compared to theirs, and I think we should count our lucky stars and be glad that we don't really have a big PFOA problem.
Well, I, I agree with that part, but I, like I'm saying, it, it's... If the state to remind that they have rose colored glasses that all the time and have to give us a weird regulation that no, but nobody else in the country's got, I, you know, I feel that it's their regulation that caused it, and that they oughta be doing more help, more, more help for us.
I agree, I have made that case to our representatives, I've given senate testimony to that effect. But as, uh, like I say, at this point, the state is disinclined to take responsibility for every landfill in the state. But I, like, again, I would-
Create a precedence.
Uh, again, I believe that if we had a problem on that order, that we would, we could expect to get help. I don't think they would, state would stand and watch us go bankrupt.
I'm not as optimistic as you are.
Well, and I agree with Ken, it's one of those things where the state said it was okay to do something, you do it, and then later on down the road, they say, oh, no, 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 yeah. So I, at some point, there should be accountability on their part. Where we only did what they suggested.
We did operate, we did operate according to the license.
That's right.
Okay, in that case, um, a quick review of action items before we go into executive session, and, uh, the only one I caught was, uh, making sure Tony and Forrest are here to talk about the BRS budget next time.
Um, a while back, we talked about asking the sheriffs to, uh, watch the speed to a couple places here, and, but we also specified that we wanted a report as to how many were exceeding that speed, and did any-
Oh, I, I do get those.
You do?
Yeah, yeah, they even started the check sheet I wanted.
Okay, good.
And in fact, I was talking to the school guard this morning, asking how it was going, and, uh, they're, they're there quite a bit, I noticed them too, in fact, they hadn't somebody pulled over today when I came back at one o'clock, so... They are around and they, they are doing it, but they do include sheets, uh, and if they are kind of, as I suspected, the, the average speed is far less than the perceived speed.
Yeah, I thought, thought probably would be, it just, people just-
But it's good to, I'm glad, they have been out a lot, uh, by the school crossing out here, which is good, and they haven't stopping people, because, uh, their presence is good, but nothing like the blue lights to grab some people's attention, you know, and to see them doing it, yeah.
I'm glad they're doing what we asked.
When they park over at the quarter day, I don't really think gotta be a that, no parking there.
Yeah, I mentioned that to the, to the captain, that, uh, it's, it's counterproductive.
I've seen it a couple, three times.
To put the car in the no parking zone while you're enforcing the no parking zone. But they have been, they have been good, and they've been doing radar, and they have been making stops, so...
And Dave and I did send a new schedule over to him this last week, uh, it had, it was our intention, and we're following through to mix it up, so that people don't get too used to them being in the same spot all the time.
I got a, a comment on, um, West Mountain Road, of course, that's just a, there's just a lot of people out in there.
Yeah. Yeah.
A comment that the speeds are too high?
Well, yeah, but it's, it's the very first part, the roads are actually really good compared to what they were-
Yeah.
-by the first house there, and he says they really fly by, so...
Yeah, it's, uh-
That's the problem, we make the roads better.
Yeah, and people jump on it and the road immediately starts coming apart.
Right in that first house?
You know, gravel roads aren't, yeah, and if, if we, you know, every time that gets fixed, it gets torn up.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, uh, and they have a transition right there, so it always, it always goes to potholes.
Yeah, okay, that's just-
Potholes actually slow them down, I actually had someone call me and ask to put the potholes back.
Yeah.
So, uh, that was the one action item I caught tonight, let me review some of the previous ones, um... Uh, let's see, we, uh, found out that V-Trans, uh, is going to hire a contractor to do Glastonbury Road, and we were gonna look and see if we could-
Yep, still waiting to hear back from, uh, from the state on that, but yeah, we just wanna tag on to their contractor.
Okay, so we're still waiting to hear on that one?
Doesn't V-Trans, they contract someone to do that small piece?
No, they were doing it themselves, and then we would, they were doing the last part for us-
Right.
After our little mishap up there, or their little mishap, uh, they didn't wanna do our part, now they don't wanna do their part. So, they've hired a contractor who lives on the road, and I've already proposed a contract saying they had our three hundred feet onto that, we'll give you, we'll give you sand too, so...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but it's not finalized yet.
Okay, it's still in the works.
Yeah.
Did we ever get that rotating wall up there on that road fixed, so?
No, that's a, that's another project that is a project. Still there.
And, uh, the other one, uh, the next one was about the various funds, uh... Did we ever go to the attorney with questions about that?
No, we haven't, uh, we haven't, because we haven't gotten all the data together to go with Merrill, so we're not wasting money talking to her. But I, I think the, the big ones are, like I'm saying, what can we actually do with the health fund? Uh, how to correct, uh, that cemetery trust fund they have, that's for buying equipment, and, and can we just roll that into perpetual care trust fund?
Yeah, we've got those two perpetual care funds that we'd like to put into one. Uh, I was also asking about the monies from Grandview, uh, Dave gave me some of the documents from that today. Um, I didn't see the, uh, the actual legal document that transferred the money, but the discussion of the cemetery committees, uh, leading up to the sale was for a perpetual care that the monies from Grandview Cemetery Association would go into a perpetual care fund for Grandview Cemetery, which would mean it would be its own fund, and the interest only would be used to maintain only Grandview Cemetery. So I don't think there's any, it's probably the case that that's where that's gonna have to stay.
It's gonna be tough.
The only question we had on that, or the cemetery committee had on that is, and that was someone's opinion that it had to stay as sing- singularly the Grandview Cemetery Trust Fund, but we were wondering, seeing that it's now owned by Shasberry, if we can just take their trust fund money and put it into our perpetual trust fund, because that way we can maintain all the cemeteries equally. And it may to be to their advantage to have the weight of the, the total fund to fix a problem in Grandview one year, whereas if they have to just depend on, I think it's eighty thousand dollars, uh, it could take a while to get around to fixing things there. If that's legal, and then that's one straightforward question to the attorney, uh, you know, can we combine these two funds? Because now it's a Shasberry Cemetery, it used to be the Grandview, but now it's a Shasberry Cemetery.
Well, like I say, I didn't see the, the legal document that transferred the money, so that's what really matters. What, what the cemetery, what the cemetery association thought oughta happen or wanted to happen is not necessarily what was written into the legal document that transferred the money, so when we find that, we can put that in front of our attorney and find out where we really stand with that. Along with the, uh, the health fund, which we would like to dissolve. Uh, I was asked to look and see if, um, local employers wanted to sign on to the letter recommending uh, that the Vermont Community Development Program make the grant to Shire's Housing. Uh, I've got three employers who've indicated that they would be willing to do that, and so I will probably be sending that out, uh, this week. Perrin Acres want, uh, Perrin Recreations wants fifteen hundred dollars for playground equipment, which we are inclined to provide, we were going to increase their community appropriation. Dave, you were gonna find out if that's how they wanted us to handle that?
And they do, so I just rolled that into their community appropriation.
Okay, good. Uh, Dave and I were asked to look into FirstNet, uh, uh, First Responder Network and, uh, the currently available discounts to first responders, and that, uh, information was passed on to, Joe Vatican, our fire chief, who passed it on to the volunteers. Uh, the parks committee, I guess, is gonna be working all winter on, uh, deciding what kind of water fountains to buy at, uh-
Yes.
Cleveland and, uh-
Big fountain or a wading pool.
Yeah.
Well, the first snag to that, of course, is that the water main runs on the opposite side of the street.
So we gotta dig, drill across.
Yeah, yeah, so there's a possibility of teeing into one of the neighboring houses before the-
Before their meter.
curb stop, yeah. Yeah, so Jim's looking into that for me, to see if that's a, a big thing, but of course, I thought, you know, it'd be convenient if it ran on our side, but of course, it runs on the other side of the street, so... Uh, we'll see what we can do with that, but a, a water fountain wouldn't take too much of a drag, so maybe we can just connect it at the end of the run before the curb stop and get it in.
Okay.
It'll make it much more expensive, though, because we're gonna have to run a lot more pipe to get it to where it needs to be, so...
Okay, keep us posted on that.
Yeah, we'll just keep looking at it.
Um, I was gonna put the mowing bids up on the website, as is our, our usual procedure with, uh, invitations to bid for the town. We've had a few issues with the website, uh, when that was happening, and I got bogged down in trying to work through those, and so that didn't happen, but, uh, the legal notices were provided in the banner twice, uh, so... Uh, we seem to be back on track, so in the future, um, people can expect to see those notices posted to the website whenever, uh, whenever we have requests for proposals or, or invitations to bid. And the, uh, planning commission was asked to look into, uh, the proposal from the Southern Economic Zone that towns, uh, begin trying to solve their own broadband issues with a survey to find out where in fact they actually have broadband issues. And, uh, the planning commission has decided that they would indeed, uh, be willing to take on that task. There will probably be some, uh, costs associated with that, either in, um, doing some sort of mailer, probably, um, getting some help from BCRC perhaps with some, some mapping of, uh, provider coverage. As I was mentioning at the top of the meeting, I believe we can provide that from the, uh, the Economic Development Fund that we have that's been sitting there for quite a while without being used. And so, uh, so that's moving forward.
Just as a side note, I know a select, select person who was, uh, in the little town up north in Addison County, where FirstNet came to them and told them about, you know, this is what it's for, it's for first responders and all that sort of stuff. And because we are, uh, AT&amp;T is the, the, the contractor in this, they have to put up another tower, or a tower in that town, and the townspeople are against it. You know, it's just, what, what do you want, do you want, you want cell service, or do you want? It's gonna take a tower, it's just, it's just frustrating that some people don't see or think that a tower is very objectable, too.
Yeah.
They can hide them pretty good.
Well, I, I know that, yes, so, but it's just, here, here it is, this is a real, real big benefit for everybody, and-
Sure.
It just-
I'll let you know, because my bill doubled, so, you know, my FirstNet experience is not working out so hot at the moment.
Oh, really?
Yeah, because I had to break my bill up into, uh, I now have three separate AT&amp;T bills, because each FirstNet phone has to be its own bill, and you pay in advance and it's supposed to, so, I still haven't figured it out, and I have a lot of-
I thought it was supposed to be cheaper for the board.
It's supposed to be a lot cheaper, uh, the dust hasn't settled yet, but it, it has been a struggle, I can tell you.
You on hoodling?
To try and, to try and get this to, to work properly.
Well-
But, uh, we'll see, we'll see, it's, it's early in the game.
But they're, but they're out there, the point is they're out there.
Yeah.
But AT&amp;T is out there, actively talking to towns.
Yeah, yeah, it's available around here right now, I don't know, because we're using them.
Uh, one other thing on the Economic Development Fund I wanted to mention to the board, I, this is, uh, following up on an email that I did send out. I was in, uh, discussions this last, uh, week with BCRC people who are working with the town of Bennington on a grant to get, um, uh, a grant through the Vorick Program, Vermont Outdoor Recreation Economic Collaborative, which is Governor Scott's, uh, recent plan to, uh, help the state and towns, uh, leverage their economic assets, their, their recreational assets for economic good. And, um, they were looking for what kind of, um, uh, support they could suc- if Shasberry would support that kind of effort, if there are particular things in Shasberry that could be written into the plan. And I did mention the, uh, the talk that, uh, the planning commission has done recently about, uh, looking into developing our trails or ancient roads and our logging roads as actual trail assets, and in particular, their, their request that we look seriously at, um, making a trail, making a parking lot and a trail to the Shasberry Municipal Forest up on West Mountain, uh, which would be kind of a first step to see how people respond to that sort of thing. Uh, so that was, uh, uh, included in the plan. They ask if we would be willing to support that with, economically, if like there was a match, and we don't know for sure that there is one yet. Um, I said I would ask the board if, uh, that I thought the board could probably support, say, a thousand dollars to, uh, further that effort, uh, if the board's agreeable to that, uh, should that come up. Again, that's money that could come out of that Economic Development Fund. Good?
Yep.
In that case, um, I'd be looking for a motion to go into an executive session to discuss personnel issues.
So move.
Moved by Art.
Second.
Second by Joe, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will move into executive session.